On my text. But it looked like Kathy was gonna break into it shortly after I left. My health department candy's all gone though, so I'm gonna need to. Come by.
Yeah, he drops it or picks it up, takes it with him.
Oh.
You can't sell it if it hits the floor.
Hey.
Hi Amanda, I don't know if I said hi.
Hello.
Getting close to seven o'clock here.
Yeah.
Mike, you got anybody else coming on?
I'm not board commissioners wise, no.
Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting then.
Go ahead.
Like to like to call to order the Planning Commission Citizen Advisory Committee for the city of Lowell for our regular meeting of Monday, December fourteenth at seven P M. Please, let's go with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. With its stance, one nation under God, indivisible. Justice for all.
That was terrible.
I'd like to welcome everybody too. I know we have some guests here. Mike, I didn't get a chance to say hi to you, so hi and welcome to everybody else. Nice to have you all with us tonight. Sue, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder. Commissioner Cadwalder.
Oh, is that not picking up?
I'm here. I got you now.
Okay.
Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Ellis.
Was on earlier.
Oh, he's on, so.
For some reason, he's not getting signal.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Gadula. Commissioner Plank.
Hi, here.
Commissioner Shrobin.
I'm here.
And Chair Barker.
Here, thank you, Sue. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
We have a where it was Commissioners present, I believe Mr. Plank was was in attendance and right? Or was he absent because he's neither present nor absent?
He was there.
Okay.
I'll add that in.
Excuse me, this is just the approval of the agenda first. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve the agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda as written, please say aye.
Chair Barker. Chair Barker, with this being a Zoom meeting, we need to roll call votes on everything.
Okay, go ahead, Sue, roll call.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Shrobin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Now, do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty, our regular meeting?
Motion for approval.
In a second?
Support.
And discussion? Was there a discussion on Plank?
Yeah, he was. He was not in the absent or the present, so as soon as he said he was here.
Please add Colin. Yeah, please add Colin to the present.
Yes, I will.
Discussion? Any other discussion? Then Sue, roll call, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Shrobin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Is there any public comment other than the items on the agenda? Is there anybody that has a an item that's not on our agenda tonight from the public?
Yeah, Chair Barker, can I have a minute real quick?
Yes, Mayor Mike DeVor, please.
David and Colin are both up for appointment, reappointment on this board, so I'm just here to make sure that they both wish to continue on the planning and we can get it approved at the next council meeting if they both would like to continue.
Oh, I will be there.
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none then. Old business, Grand Rapids gravel. Andy, can you bring us up to date on the Grand Rapids gravel situation?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's the last couple of meetings, we have kind of walked through the staff report that we prepared a couple of months ago on the application. Spent a fair amount of time at the last meeting talking about the city's water supply wells and groundwater and things like that. I provided in your packets some kind of a draft motion with findings and conditions, conditions of approval, that is. That's not a directive from me or a suggestion that you need to approve it tonight, but if the commission is inclined to do so, I I want to make sure that it is in a decent form and we go through conditions of approval, that that's something that that you are inclined to do. I don't think as far as walking through the staff report that there is a lot left to do. We went through the site plan standards, the special land use standard, the mining standards, I believe. I don't know that we talked about the no very serious consequences test, which is part of the state statute. Can't talk about that tonight if you'd like. But, you know, I think we're just here to hear from the applicants if there's any new information that they would like to present or discussion items you'd like to include. Or further questions from the from the planning commission, so we're kind of in that deliberation phase after the public hearing, but prior to a decision where the planning commission, I think, should just continue to walk through the application, ask questions and make sure that it's going to make what it feels that they could decision, so. It's it's just kind of planning commission discussion at this point, so I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to have the applicant provide some additional information or make any statements before the planning commission picks up and starts talking again, but I think that would probably be the best course of action at this point. Best course of.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Is there a representative from Grand Rapids gravel here?
Yes.
James?
James, thank you. Thank you, Andy. I don't really have any additional information or comments. After the last two meetings, I had reached out to the trails at Williams and Works and he was going to bring up the fencing issue that we had talked about of trying to. Rule our resources to make one fence instead of two fences at their next meeting, but. Either way, there will be a fence on the south side there. Just whether it's one fence or then two fences. Can be decided at a later day if we can work it out with them or not, but that's really all the findings I had.
James, is is the official easement and Mike Burns might weigh in on this too. Was the is the official easement in in operation? Has it been signed? Where where are we with, I guess?
It has not been signed.
No, hasn't been executed yet.
Is it in motion though, I guess?
Andy could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think really we'd wait until the it could be like a condition of approval or something because we wouldn't want to execute an easement and then. Not be granted the right to mine it and we would probably not maybe execute. I don't mean to use as leverage, but like. If we weren't able to mine there or something and had to go through that fight, we might not pursue a project and then wouldn't want to use that or have that as a failure that we could sell it to a different developer type of thing.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman.
And can we add that?
Yep, so we already did. There is a there is kind of an intent statement that Grand Rapids gravel provided. That was a couple of years ago. There was kind of an intent to do that. Their most recent site plan does show a proposed fifteen foot wide easement on there. James, one comment I would make is I ran this by Dave and they are asking for a twenty foot wide easement, twenty foot wide easement instead of fifteen. I think that would be a fairly minor and simple adjustment to make to to the site plan, but otherwise, Mr. Chairman, yes, just like with other applications where we have, you know, cross asset, cross access easements or utility easements or something, we add that as a condition of approval and then. As they're following through and getting things in motion prior to starting operations, they would get that easement put together and we would run it by the the trail folks and the city attorney to make sure that it's in the correct form and everything like that, so that is not a big concern for me right now.
Andy, on on your conditions of approval that you that was just given to us, is that on there though? Am I just missing it?
If you look at condition.
There's there's like twenty-two conditions.
Yeah, it is.
It's under findings. I see it on the findings where it's number three.
Condition fourteen at the bottom of page three. So I did modify that to read the a twenty-foot wide easement there, but yeah, it is on the conditions right now. And so, do you want me to kind of walk through this this? This document that I.
I don't think that's. Commissioners weigh in on this, but I don't think that's necessarily what we need to do, but there were a couple of conditions in the in the condition section, number sixteen, the stockpile height.
Yep.
Shall not exceed X number of feet and the proposed berm shall be between and then feet tall. Those are the two questions that I saw. Commissioners, is there any other questions that anybody else has for Andy? And Andy, maybe you can address those as if there are any other questions. Seeing none, go ahead, Andy.
So these are, there are a couple of items and if you recall. We had some some discussion at the last couple of meetings over heights of the of the stockpile and then how how tall that berm should be. The site plan shows it between four and six feet. I thought maybe something a little taller might be appropriate. At the same time, you know, Mike pointed out that since they're digging, you know, down into the ground that, you know, a six-foot berm from where the base of the of the mine will will be will ultimately end up being quite a bit taller than that, plus there's a lot of natural vegetation and. Pretty decent setback there, so one of the items, I guess, for you to to discuss would be if you're comfortable with their four to six-foot berm height, if you'd like something a little taller. And then stockpile height, you know, the stockpile materials would be, you know, with the with the low point kind of in the base of the mine, if you will, so. Some, I think some number would be helpful there just to limit the amount of potential for, you know, blowing materials, you know, sand and dust and so forth. You know, again, I don't, I'm not sure what kind of number you're comfortable with, if it's a, you know, forty or fifty feet or something like that, or if that's too tall, obviously you can't be. Can't be too small in that in that number and say like ten feet, because that's not gonna work for for the applicant, I don't think, so those are just a couple of areas where I felt like some planning commission deliberation would be appropriate.
Is there a standard height? Is there a standard height that most piles get?
It really all depends. A lot of Mike came out and looked at the pit and those are probably a lot of fifty-foot high. Stockpiles.
Yeah, I took a I took a tour of the site right before Thanksgiving and, I mean, I went to where the four to six-foot berms were. And I tried, you know, I went outside the berm just to see if there was, if I thought there was gonna be an issue and there wa- I I. I believe it did it restricted the noise, you didn't hear the noise, you could barely, you know, you could barely see it, you had to stand a certain way just to see it in most of the instances, so. I didn't have concern, it didn't it didn't jump out at me as something that was a concern.
And then the.
As Andy mentioned, the smaller we go won't, we need to create enough material in late fall that will last through the winter when we're not. Processing material and if the stockpile height is limited too severely, we have to cover more ground. To create enough volume to make it through the winter than just one standard pile and that obviously takes moving of material multiple times, this is inefficient and creates more movement on site. More equipment means more noise. And just things for you guys to consider.
James, what are what are you saying? What what would you recommend for a stockpile height? Let's start with that one first.
I'd love fifty, but then I think our. Equipment is used most efficiently and I think as Andy's pointed out a couple of times, if we dig down before the water level and we get the the fifty foot from where the stockpile begins, isn't fifty feet from if you're standing on Bow's Road. It's significantly less, maybe thirty-five feet-ish type of a thing.
Andy, any thoughts on that?
I was gonna suggest in the forty to fifty-foot range would have been my my suggestion. I think above fifty would be too tall and less than that would be too restrictive.
Well, what was the what was what was the depth to groundwater on the previous, on the plots on the previous, I mean, if it's ten, ten, fifteen feet to groundwater, that's that's the max additional. Buffer you're gonna get on your stockpile height, so I'd probably conservatively say ten feet down to groundwater, so.
Yeah, so it looks like groundwater is at six twenty-two. Or so. Then you're at six forty or so right now. Does that look about right?
Yep.
I'll be digging down about twenty feet.
Fifteen, twenty feet. Deeper than I would have thought, so. Yeah, so you figure. Add that to your berm height. Or subtract that from your berm height, I guess.
Right.
I don't think I don't think anything over fifty foot. I think we just put fifty foot on there and be done with it if that's what, you know, he recommends, I mean. Is somebody gonna go out there with?
I was just gonna say that. Who's gonna go out there and measure? I'm not going to. Let's just put down forty-five feet. Let's put down forty-five feet and go from there. Is that fine with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, then the the proposed berm has been proposed between four and six foot. I I'm still under the opinion that we should we should raise that up to five to eight foot. And whatever the median is there, there are some areas there where obviously it's it's already high, so I my my proposal would be somewhere between five and eight foot. Commissioners, thoughts?
I don't like a real high bank there, but. I'd like a little less than eight.
Well, you wanna go four to six or five to six?
Yeah.
Five to seven?
Six and a half.
Commissioners?
Go five to seven, Bruce. I like that.
All right, five to seven it is. Forty-five foot for the stockpile, five to seven for the berm area. And the one area is not to be burned. Is that correct, James? Is that your understanding too? Along the trail?
Yeah, the berm will be along Bow's Road. There won't be.
Right, correct.
On the south side of the pond.
Correct, or on the west side where the park is.
Correct.
Okay. Is everybody, is there all the commissioners agree with that too?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions on conditions and? Commissioners, at this point. With with Andy's approval, I guess, or Andy's input here, would you like to entertain a vote on this at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Marty?
No, because I'm kind of concerned. When James made a comment that if this doesn't fly, basically it sounded to me as if we're not gonna play nice with the trails that. That's that wasn't a response I was expecting, but. So I'm not in favor at this time of doing a vote.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess I I missed the I missed the comment that that was so that bothered you, Marty, so I was probably just caught up and trying to reheat my coffee, but. What what was the comment about not playing nice with the the trails that?
If. They haven't, the easement is basically stalled and isn't going, sounds to me going forward if they don't get approval. That's that's what I how I took it and. That's what I heard, so.
Can I make a comment or?
Sure.
It wa- I didn't mean it no way at all. As Andy pointed out, there's a intent, we went back and put it right on the site plan. My comment was just, we can't really execute the easement until the whole project gets underway. There is absolutely every intent to put the easement in and we're not gonna not play nice. It's just, we can't execute an easement and then had that be the only part of that project that gets going, that I promised you is all I meant. I'm sorry if you took it.
Yeah, and yeah, when you said it, that's how it came across, so if I'm wrong, I apologize and. I appreciate.
I apologize. It's every intent to, it just the. I don't think, and Andy can correct me, the process of how it would be executed is just not at the correct time to fully execute it right now, but it would be executed as this, before the digging started, it would be executed, it's just not time right now to do so.
Okay.
Because that whole. Is the perfect place as a condition of approval.
Yeah, the because the trails are pretty important for the city, so.
Hundred percent.
Oh, yeah, I want.
That intent and everything, it's. Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not good with it then.
And so Marty.
Marty, Marty, one other thing, one other thing too, is the fourteenth condition for approval is the applicant shall establish an easement for a non-motorized trail, so it's conditional, the approval is conditional upon them doing it, much like all the other conditions.
Correct.
So if that does answer your question, I mean, we've we've gone through all of the other standards and and things of that nature and we've we've pretty much wrapped all of those up. And I think we've filled out all of the conditions that would go along with it and my my question is twofold, one is to Andy, is there anything else we would need to do or can we take a motion? To accept the site plan as is? With conditions? Where are we at, I guess, is my question.
So if if you are inclined to entertain a a vote tonight, it would be a motion to approve and then reference the title of this document that I that I've given you decisions and conditions of of approval with today's date on it. And what this document is, is it it lays out a little bit of the background as far as what properties that we're talking about, what documents were submitted to the city. In in relation to this project, so either applicant applicant's items, the site plan and so forth, stuff from me, stuff from Dave, any other. Comments, you know, basically we're kind of laying out what you're basing your your decision on. And then for findings, we have in in here that the planning commission is going to incorporate the findings from my report as your findings affect as far as as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned. That we also find pursuant to the zoning enabling act, there's some language in there that deals specifically with mining. And so we find that we, I mean, the planning commission would would find that there are valuable natural resources on the property, there is a need for those valuable natural resources and that the applicant has provided sufficient information that no very serious consequences would would result from the mining. And then this A through F are kind of the factors that the planning commission considers when it's determining whether or not. The sufficient finding of no very serious consequences has been determined here. And so with that, that kind of lays out the basis for your decision and then if you're inclined to approve it, you would you would do so, subject to the twenty-two conditions here. I'm not gonna read them all, but a lot of them are, you know, operational conditions, some of them are conditions where before the applicant starts now working on on the site, for example, they'd have to get a driveway permit from the city. We have these the setbacks setbacks on on here, they'd have to get their permits from Eagle. We talked about. The fencing and the width of the easement would be at twenty feet and that's something where prior to 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 commencing operations, that would have to be done, agreed to by the city and and recorded. And then also I'll draw your attention to items twenty-one and twenty-two. Number twenty-one would be a would be a performance bond or a guarantee of some sort put in place by the applicant, we're suggesting the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, which. Rounds out to, you know, between three and four thousand an acre for the site, which I think is pretty reasonable and then twenty-two would be the applicant would deposit five thousand into like an enforcement escrow that the city would hold so that. If if city staff for some reason needs to visit the site for any kind of enforcement purpose or to investigate a complaint, it can do so and then any costs incurred in that process would draw from that applicant escrow account. I don't anticipate needing to use that very much, but it's something there. Both of those items, twenty-one and twenty-two are there to protect the city, of course, from, you know, any expenses that it could incur of, you know, for some reason, things don't go well at the site. Again, I don't I don't have reason to believe that that's the case, but you always build those things into these kinds of projects to make sure that that the city is 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 protected. So those would also have to be in place.
Andy?
Prior to them starting, yes.
But that would be a, those would both be conditions, one one point, and then secondarily, both twenty-one and twenty-two, those are pretty standard sums, aren't they, for a project similar to this?
Yeah, so usually for 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 mining operations, the the guarantees that we've been seeing have been in, you know, about four thousand an acre. Because this has a big pine, it says they're actually digging all sixty-four acres, it's a little bit less than that. So as far as the active mining area, it probably nets out to about four thousand acre. And then and then the five thousand in in escrow account is something that we've used with other jurisdictions and it's 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 worked out quite well, just because we've had some complaints in in other projects and with and with different operators, let me be clear about that, these aren't on Grand Rapids gravel projects. But they're helpful for. For the for the local unit, because they don't have to be, you know, concerned about spending a bunch of money if there's an issue, they can go investigate it right away, you don't have to worry about getting stuck with a big bill. There must there has to be, you know, a bunch of follow-up. Again, I'm not anticipating those things, this operation. You know, I I mind, I think that it'll it'll go well, but again, it's important to have these things in place to protect the city.
Correct, correct. Commissioners, are there any other questions? And and actually, before we we do the commissioner thing, I'd like to ask Michael Burns, our city manager, first. Mike, do you have any other questions or concerns on this project? Mike, do you have any other questions or concerns on this project?
I do not.
Your standpoint?
Nope.
And Mayor, Mike DeBoer, do you have any other concerns or questions?
No, I think you guys have done a really good job.
Okay, thank you. Then commissioners, I, I'll, I'll rephrase the question with Andy's. Findings, a, a decision and conditions of approval from tonight.
Bruce, it looks like the applicant has a question. The applicant has his hand raised, I just wanted to let you know that he has a comment.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Condition twenty-one, is there a way?
Yeah.
Obviously, neither performance guarantee, but is there a way? To me, it's a little high, just based on the acreages that Andy said, but even if you start with that, is there a way after the project's halfway done and? We have a ten acre lake and we've moved to the west half of the property and the east half is kind of vegetated and done, but now has a lake that we could. Reduce that over time and not just have a. Two hundred thousand dollar bond for the whole duration of the project. We've had that in other townships and cities, so that's why I'm just asking.
So what if we had the, the, that the amount be reviewed every? Year or two or something like that?
Can we just have, can we have that option, I guess, is what I'm asking for?
I would be, oh, that would, that would be fine with me. I would. And also, you know, if there are increases in costs that occur over. You know, the next ten or fifteen years or however long it takes to get, to get this done, the city could adjust as it needed to as well. So what we can do is. Last couple of sentences here, so we can just say. So after, when it says, after the word complete, I'll just say that the. Guarantee. Shall be reviewed. Annually. And adjusted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Adjusted accordingly?
Yeah. We'll say is, it'll be adjusted accordingly based on market conditions at the time and the amount of. Of mining. Remaining on the site. Remaining to be completed. Okay, do you want me to read that? Are you good?
Please, please, well, read it one more time completely, I guess.
So after the word complete, it'll say the guarantee shall be reviewed annually and adjusted accordingly based on market conditions at the time in the, in the amount of mining remaining to be completed.
Okay, commissioners, anybody have any thoughts at this point? Seeing no hand raised, I will make the motion then that we approve the. Grand Rapids gravel proposed mineral extraction mining operation at twenty-one oh four Bo's Road. In, in reference to the decision and conditions of approval of December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Specifically, the adding in the findings. Which really goes to the zoning enabling act in regard to the mining operations. And the twenty-two conditions of approval, and again, specifically with the change in twenty-one. As well as the change in sixteen, the amendment there which would say stockpile heights shall not exceed forty-five feet. And seventeen, the proposed berm shall be between five and seven feet. So with that, I, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I can second it.
And is there any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, Sue, would you do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Godula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schrobin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Thank you very much all, and James, I, I wish you and your family a very merry Christmas.
And the same to all of you, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on, we have, our next old business is a public hearing for River City Cannabis. Special land use twenty-one sixty-three West Main, it was tabled from our last meeting. This is a, a public hearing that'll open, but first I'd like to have the applicant, if the applicant is here. If.
Yes, sir.
Give us in just a few words at least what you would, what, what you're proposing, what do you want to do?
All right, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so our micro business is a similar to a craft brewery. We're gonna grow a small amount of cannabis, only sell what we grow, so we're not doing the large scale. You know, middleman stuff that the, the big dispensaries do, we're doing a more small, personal craft style cannabis business.
Okay, and, and, and I, I'm sorry, your name again, too?
Michael Matthews. I'm one of the co-founders.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, tha- thank you.
Yes, sir.
Andy, you want to run us, you want to run us through what we're doing here?
Yep, so as Mr. Matthews mentioned, this would be for a micro business and this is located. In the, the strip center behind the It- Italol Five, so those occupy one of the. Sections of that building, so it's, it's a little unusual in the sense that the, the building itself is split up into several parcels and the property lines. Run right through the building. So.
Andy, Andy? Andy, real quickly, can I ask you or Michael specifically, where does it stop? It, it, it goes from the end of the building by the theater, and where does it stop? Which, which is, is it the, the Chinese eatery place? Is it the, the workout place? Is that owned by you? I, where, where does it stop, I guess, is my question.
That is a, I don't know specifically which business it ends at, that's a great question, actually.
Are you asking about the property line?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a. As far as I know, we're just in that one suite. I guess I don't really understand the question fully as far as. It pertains to the site plan, let me see.
Well, on the site plan, or on the photo I'm looking at, it looks like it goes through a number of those businesses. Up to and, and up to the fitness center that's there. And there's like three or four different businesses that are hooked, hooked together. So my question is, is whether or not it's, it's multiple buildings there, multiple storefronts, I guess is a better way of phrasing it. Or if it's just the last, very last unit.
So.
Doesn't show that, is, that's not the way it shows on the map.
Yeah, so it's based on what I'm looking at, and I'm just on like Google Street View, the, the western. Border or the western wall of the, what's shown as the Hong Kong buffet would be the property line. Then it would go to the east of that now, or to the west of that. Now, I don't know if the applicant is going to occupy all of that space, I assume not. And that's why it's kind of unusual and that the, the addresses, you know, the one building has got multiple street addresses. In addition to there being multiple suites within some of those addresses as well, so. This address that goes all, all the way to the western end, there's like. I want to say three or four different suites in there, so this is where the, the Y used to be there. And there's a few other places in there, there's the, that fit body is in there.
Yeah. Yeah, we're right in between the, the fit body and the, the Chinese restaurant. So there's a suite nestled in there that they actually cut the, I think what's the fit body now, they cut that in half and they made it two suites, so we're actually in one of those suites.
So you're only in a portion of, of the suites there.
Uh, yeah.
Still confused as to exactly where it is.
It's individually partitioned. Sorry.
It would kind of be right smack in the middle of where, so on my staff report, Bruce, we have that parcel highlighted.
Yes.
And so they would kind of be right in the middle of that, so. What they're proposing, so their business wouldn't occupy the full width of that whole thing, it would be one suite.
Okay.
Correct.
Separate within there, but it'd be kind of in the middle of that thing.
It's just pretty. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's pretty confusing, because it looks like they're going to take from the Chinese restaurant all the way to the edge, when you look at this.
Yes.
There's no, there's no defining, this is where it's going to be.
Yeah, and this is unusual for these kinds of buildings, because usually they have one address and then there's, you know, suite A, suite B, or. You know, suite one oh one or one oh two or whatever it is, but in this case, there's three addresses. And, you know, six different spaces and with, you know, six different potential businesses in there between. Tractor supply, restaurants, fitness studios, et cetera.
So we're, in, in essence, we are only, in essence, we are only looking at one of the suites out of. Five or six that were there, is that?
Correct. Yes, and so this is primarily, in, in what, as you're kind of gathering already, this is more about the. The use and less about the site plan, because we're not. You know, they're not proposing to, you know, adjust the parking lot or the building itself, I mean, the building is there. So, so this is really a discussion about the land use that's proposed for this area and not. You know, whether or not they have enough trees or something like that, I mean, that's, so it, it, it's, it's a very use oriented. Evaluation at this point.
All right, continue on, Andy.
All right, so the applicant has submitted a relatively complete site plan, there are a handful of things that were not. That were not submitted. Most of which I don't consider to be necessary, so for example, a lighting plan and, and building elevations, which I have. Illustrated on, on page two of my staff report, those are there because they weren't submitted, I would. I would, I think, say that we don't need those items because the building is existing, the lighting is existing. The verification, the verification and, and consent would be from the property owner to kind of recognize what the use is for this, for this property. And then under delivery four G, that's something specific to marijuana establishments where we require them to provide some documentation. For how all the transactions get recorded, so this would be something that, if you were inclined to. Approve this, you, 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 you could ask for those items, ask conditions of, of approval, if that's the way that you went. You can ask for, 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 for these to get turned in and, and dealt with after the fact, and we can, you know, make sure that they satisfy the requirements. So for.
Andy, Andy?
Yes.
Andy, one quick question, under that completeness, you've got delivery, comma, four G, how the transaction is recorded, can you explain that? I'm just not sure what that is.
Yeah, so in our, let me find the standard here. In the zoning ordinance, in the special land use section where we have the chapter on marijuana establishments. We have. So this, the, the standard says that they also must turn in the, their procedures for accepting delivery of marijuana at the establishment, including how. Including procedures for how and where it is received, where it is stored, and how the transaction is recorded. So.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's, that's the standard.
Okay, sorry, okay, I just didn't understand it.
Under site plan review, as I mentioned, there's not a lot of site plan stuff to look at here, we did look at landscaping, lighting, parking, et cetera. So we stay, say in our staff report that the applicant. Or that the planning commission may modify landscape requirements, but this is again, it's kind of an un- unusual site and that you don't have. The traditional type of frontage that you would ordinarily have on a, on a public road, I mean, technically, this would not be a legal lot. Because you don't have frontage on a street, it's, it's, I guess, tech- technically landlocked. Due to its configuration, even though the whole thing is paved. So that being said, we, we don't know that you, that any additional landscaping would be necessary in this case. Same thing with lighting, if they decide to add additional lighting beyond what is already there, would have to comply with section four point two four of your zoning ordinance. And for parking. You know, the site plan that the applicant submitted applies the standard of one space for each two hundred square feet of gross floor area. There are a hundred and five spaces on, on, just on this one parcel, and as we all know in this area, I mean, the whole. All of the parking kind of blends together for all of the different businesses there, and there's a lot of parking on the site, so we do not have any concerns that parking might be insufficient in that case. We do note that the site plan shows that some of the barrier free spaces would be restripped in front of. Of, of the site there, so that's something that you could address as a condition of approval, but. Other than that, there's not any, any major changes to parking proposed. There's a loading and unloading area showed behind the building, that's to the north of the building. Again, that's not a marked space, but it's something where. You know, the whole rear area is paved, and so all of those businesses do some, you know, loading, unloading on it north side of the building as it would be necessary.
Andy and Andy? Andy, in relationship to that north side of the building there, and driving by. There is a number of the evergreen trees that are out there that have died. And it's quite obviously, nobody along that entire back stretch has done any keeping up with, as they're supposed to. And I know we can't, you know, because it's only one. Storefront, I don't know how you, how, how do we address that, is there a way of addressing it? I, I counted four dead trees and there's a number of them that are, you know, just, it's just, it, it, it's bad out there.
Yep, so you could, and, and, you know, and again, this is where it gets a little bit tricky for the planning commission because you have, you know, multiple. Owners there, so you could require that, that the applicant, you know, either, you know, put a fence up or maybe just replace. Some of those trees, maybe something that the deer don't like to eat very much. Back there, because it, it looks, I'm not sure what kind those are. Right now, I know a lot of times those arbor, arborites get used as landscaping and deer just demolish those things. But if there's some kind of evergreen that could be planted there behind that portion of the business or of the parcel where the applicant's business would be and where those deliveries may be taking place. That could help. That said, there's also not a lot directly to the north there that would be potentially harmed by. By anything, I mean, there's not like a bunch of houses right there, so I also don't know how necessary that is. But you're right, overall, there's certainly some, you know, some maintenance issues back there, and I don't know that, that this application is, is the right time to talk about those. And I don't know, I mean, this, this building has been there for quite a while. But it's something that, that you could begin to address with this applicant and as, if we get more applications for other types of land uses in these. Other suites, you know, if, if the, if the commission is concerned about this, we can require that more improvements to be made along that further boundary to keep that. You know, keep that screening a little more. Functional.
Mr. Chair, can I have a question for Andy? Isn't this something that with the, the overall site plan for the entire? Isn't this something that with the o- the overall site plan for the entire part for that all, that whole strip? Isn't this something that we can just handle as a code enforcement manner through the, with the uh, with the, with the owner of the whole property?
I mean, maybe so, it depends on on how it was approved originally and what standards were in place and how it was. You know, when and how, and if there's records of it, I mean, if the city didn't require any landscaping at the time that it was built. I don't know that we can retro- retroactively go in there now and tell them what they have to do.
Okay.
But if there, if there was landscaping shown at the time, um and, or if there's a a requirement for landscaping to be shown at the time, then yes, you could. Um, say, hey, you've gotta keep this alive back here and keep it functional.
Uh, again, and driving by, it was, it was pretty obvious that somebody planted pine trees back there of some sort or. Fir trees, whatever they are, I mean, they're all, I, they're all set apart, certain number of feet and all of that, and they're all about the same height. Except for, I think that there's at least four of them that are dead, in addition to, there's a bunch of uh just overgrown. Trees that have fallen down or, you know, it it just looks bad, I lo- I frankly, I like Mike's idea of going at it. From a system wide because it's even worse down by the Mel Trotter store than anywhere else. And it seems to me as though the ordinance route would be a whole lot better, as far as I'm concerned, and it it seems to me as though that would be the better route. And frankly, it's the right way of going, I, to be honest, so.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? Hearing none will continue, so signage um was not addressed on the uh site plan. Um, the, the property owner, if you recall a couple of years ago. Uh, received a variance to have a slightly larger multi-tenant site on the, for that. Property, so my anticipation is that the applicant would have one of those little. You know, ten square foot rectangles on the uh. On the sign out front, um no other sign would be permitted op- on on that site, I don't think we would allow a separate freestanding sign on that site. Since it is a multi-tenant business. Um, the applicant has su- has submitted a letter indicating that they've been pre-qualified for a state license. Um, and then obviously, the city requires the operating license as well, and so that's all included as potential conditions of approval. So we have site plan review standards to go through, um, Mr. Chairman, since we're on Zoom, do you want? To walk through these and vote on them one at a time, should I walk through all of them first, how do you want to handle this step?
Let's uh, let's go through. Um, let's go through, the first ones, let's go through A to F, let's go through the entire set.
Okay, and then do you wanna uh accept public comment now or after?
Uh, I I would, no, I think let's go through the standards and after the standards, remind me and we'll do it then.
Okay. So the first site plan review standard from section eighteen point oh six of the zoning ordinance uh is that the use will not. Adversely affect the public health, safety, or or welfare, and they'll be located. On the site and plan to take into account geography size of the property, uses on adjoining property. And the relationship of size and buildings to the site. Um, so as we all know, this is, we'd go into in in existing building, the building, the parking, all of that stuff already exists. So there's not really going to be a lot of exterior modifications to the site. Um, you know, we we do, uh, so we, right in here, the planning commission should consider the change in use and its relationship to adjoining properties. Um, surrounding properties are commercial and residential in character. And um, we talked about screening a a a little bit, and we do, I guess I want to raise the concern that this is. We've done a number of marijuana facilities, this is the first one where the facility is in kind of a multi-tenant. Building, and they will be growing there, so I think the risk of of odors. Um, you know, working their way onto some of the adjacent suites is an item of concern for me. And so um I think that's something that the, that the planning commission should talk about.
Commissioners, any thoughts on it? At this point?
Um, I had the same uh concern, being so close to other, uh, let's say a strip mall. You're right next door to other uh places, for one, the the walls and security in between. The establishment, I don't know what there is now, but uh. Uh, it, I wonder if that has been taken into consideration and the closeness and proximity to door to door. Um, it seems like there's a, it's really close, like you said.
Any other thoughts, any other commissioners, any other thoughts at this point?
Everyone.
Okay.
When we did the first one, remember, we talked about. Carbon filters and different things like that to absorb. A lot of those orders, um. And I know there's probably better stuff on the market now than when we first uh went down this path. I don't know what they are. But uh I think I'd like to see um. See something about. The filtration system is a, as a separate thing, that it has to be, you know, uh. Probably, being where that's gonna be located, probably be one of the best that they can probably find. Because the door is opening, the thin walls, uh. I think it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I I agree, I think I would like a very detailed description of the HVAC. Uh, and airflow and handling numbers and data, really.
Uh, the applicant, Michael?
Yeah, so uh we actually addressed this in some additional comments, um this standard for, for these, uh, for a grow facility is to have one. Create negative air pressure inside of the contained grow space, so for us, that's um, as you'll see in the drawing, uh. Where those, where the uh metal vents are, so each of those racks is actually gonna be self-contained. Um, with the airflow going in between each one and then going through a HEPA and carbon filter, which is the industry standard at the moment. As well as, so as well as the individual grows being contained, the entire space is gonna have, also have a carbon filter and HVAC on the whole room.
Okay, so you you kind of understand where I'm coming from then, right, Michael?
Completely, completely.
You know, there, uh, there's probably better stuff out there now today than when, uh, you're the first applicant. Uh, to be this close to somebody else, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we want to make sure we get this right, and we want.
Completely.
Yep, okay.
The seconds, oh, well, actually, hold on, I should, uh, so do you guys wanna, Bruce, did you wanna take a vote on each of these?
No, let's go all the way through to uh F and then we'll uh, we'll decide at that point.
Okay, so be safe, convenient, uncongestion, will define vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for present egress points and within the site. Um, we don't really have any consi- concerns as far as this is, as far as this goes, this is a very open site, as you know, there's ample parking. Um, there's plenty of ingress and egress and minimal congestion um right now, so. Um, yeah, there's a sidewalk in front of the building, um. I don't think that making any additional changes to the sidewalk in front of this place of the. You know, this spot of of the building makes a lot of sense, considering the impacts it would have on. Some of the parking and ma- and maneuvering aisles, so I don't have any, any concerns with the overall circulation on the site. Item C, the arrangement of public and private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets in the area. Um, shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system, um again, it's well connected to Main Street. And other, other places in the city, um, this is a change of use, I, it's worth reaching out to M dot. I don't know if they're going to require a traffic study or a permit or anything, but they do, as we've learned, um even for a change of use. Uh, like this, they might um require. A study or or something along those lines for this business, so the applicant should reach out to. Uh, M dot in case a permit would be necessary, if one is not necessary, no big deal, but um if one is necessary, then tell me to follow their process.
Is that in our, our uh conditions, Andy, is that in our conditions?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, item D pertains to removal or alteration of significant natural features being restricted to those areas reasonably necessary to develop the site. Uh, no removal of natural features is proposed. Item E is satisfactory, certain is shall be provided that the requirements, other applicable codes, ordinances and requirements shall be met. Um, you know, that would be a condition of approval, as always, and then F addresses the master plan. Um, and in the master plan and in the zoning ordinance. Um, C three district is intended to permit a mixture of residential office and and commercial uses. Um, generally intended for auto-oriented, commercial and and service uses. Uh, in the master plan, this is in what they call a highway business, future land use category, again, to accommodate. Uh, uses oriented toward automobile traffic such as retail office and service uses, so. The 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 facility is is consistent with that, the proposed use is consistent with that as well. So that concludes the site plan re- review standards, Mr. Chairman, so if the plant mission wants to take a straw vote on that, then. Um, we'll continue moving on.
Okay, um, commissioners, are there any questions of Andy at this point?
Uh, I have one, Andy.
Then.
Uh, I know, I know that we don't always see the detailed uh blueprints. But uh are there detailed blueprints of the safety? Uh, uh securities of the safes or uh access doors? Has that been reviewed?
Yep, yep, they have provided a security plan um that shows. The requirements that we have in zoning ordinance for those things. Um, how the prop- or how the building would be divided and, you know, how public access would be re- restricted and so forth. That is all included in there, in their supplemental.
Any other comm- uh commissioner questions?
Seems like.
Let's do the site. Yep, Colin.
No, it just seems like a terrible place to grow pot in indoor in a strip mall building, I mean, like, um. I don't know, with HVAC concerns and odors and so on aside, just thinking of like, you know, one of the things we hope to get out of. Inviting all these pot um growing and or distributing facilities is, you know, alright, well, improve the building. And if you can out-compete your competitors, then great, you'll be in the building for a while, but if not, then we get a. A uh, an improved building out of it, but assuming that, you know, growing plants indoors is gonna involve a lot of moisture, and so. I don't know, this is like totally just a open-ended question, but it seems like you're just inviting. Mold and air quality issues in addition to like odors and so on, by growing pot in a, in what looks like it could be a, you know. Should be a radio shack, so. I don't know, are there design elements that are, you know, or caretaken to ensure that you don't end up just saturating a, a, you know. A building with humid. Mold laden air and, you know.
Yeah.
Walls, et cetera.
Yeah, so if I may answer that, um, so, standard uh is about fifty percent relative humidity for the plants. Uh, each plant requires about a gallon to a half gallon, about a gallon of water every two days. Uh, so that it's very, the humidity is pretty low, um and it's, like I said, each grow is in a self-contained environment. And we have to keep the air extremely clean and uh filtered with the HEPA and carbon filter, uh just so the plants don't get moldy, you know, you can't. So we're actually, we're actually gonna be cleaning the air, hopefully it's coming out cleaner than it's, than it's coming in, um. And so that should, you know, that's the industry standard, you know, any building can be used to grow in, uh, and so. Oh, yeah, and also, uh, in order to control the humidity, we're gonna be using dehumidifiers and rehumidifiers as well to keep it around the fifty percent relative humidity.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's your, it's your product and it's a, it's gotta be a, can't be a health hazard as your product, so I know it's in your interest. Just um, just curious about that, it's not something I really. Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions? Let's go through then the uh site plan review standards, um all, uh Sue, you wanna do a roll call vote on, on each one of these? Or do you have to have, can we do them collectively? Okay, let's do the site plan review standards, A through F, um and um. I'll, I I guess I'll make the motion to accept them, is there a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the second.
And discussion? Sue, roll call vote then for the site plan review standards.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Godula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schrobin.
Yeah.
And Chair Barker.
No. They are accepted, however, um, so, let's go on to, oh, at this point, is there any comments uh from the public? Over and above the applicant, anybody else that wants to make a comment?
Chair Barker, can I comment?
Sure.
Um, a little, yeah, I'm just a, I'm just gonna echo some of the other commissioner concerns about this. Location itself, security-wise, definitely odor-wise, I think some of you remember. Another facility that came to town and told us they were gonna control the odor with the latest and greatest technology too. Um, so, I just like, well, maybe to exercise a little caution on this, it's. There's a lot of long-term businesses in that strip mall that could be affected if this. And I'm, I'm a supporter of the, of the marijuana businesses, I voted for it on the council level, I just, I'm not. Terribly excited about. The possible negative effects to other businesses with this location, and it's a, the security concern a little bit to me too, that's all.
Okay, thank you, any other uh public comments? Alright, then we will move on to the um. Special land use review standards, Andy?
Yep, thank you, so um, I know this is old hat.
And we'll go, Andy, we'll go all the way through E on this, we'll go all the way through uh to E on this again.
Okay, so this is old hat for the planning commission, but just for everyone's information, there are general. Special land use standards that apply to all special land uses in the city, and then we have. Um, we have standards also that pertain specifically to marijuana businesses, so this first set of five standards. Uh, or six standards, A through F, um are the general special land use standards, and then the third step in this review will, would be to walk through the. The the marijuana specific standards. So with that being said, item A, the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated and maintained. Supposed to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. So again, you know, this is, this is within the Lowell City Mall, most of the, you just, the infrastructure would be used and they don't have a lot of exterior modifications proposed here. Um, we talked about, um, you know, orders and in in such, and so we just kind of. Our comment here is the planning commission should carefully consider the impact of the use on the character of the area. Um, both in terms of retail on the R three, uh multifamily residential, it's to the north. We talked about landscaping al- already, we wrote in here that the planning commission may discuss whether additional screening or fencing would be appropriate along the rear property line. It sounds like that's something that you would prefer to address with uh the overall property owner of the entire site. And not necessarily this, this one applicant. Um, item B is that the proposed special land use be generally consistent with the city of Lowell Master Plan, we talked about. Item B is that the proposed special land use be generally consistent with the city of Lowell master plan. We talked about that. Talked about that already. Uh, the master plan does, designates this area as a highway business or highway commercial. Uh, type designation, which is intended for auto oriented retail and service uses. So we do believe this use is generally consistent with the master plan. Item C requires that it be served adequately by essential public facilities such as highway, streets, police, fire, et cetera. The site plan indicates that the proposed development would using the existing infrastructure. Um, so most of that stuff is already on site. Obviously there's already curb cuts, already water and sewer and all that. The, the, the police department would have to look at the security plan and with all of these establishments. The, yes, the city's police chief has to look at the site plan and the security plan and, and sign up on it prior to. Prior to operation. And then there is a fee that the city charges. That's enabled by the act that helps offset any potential enforcement costs moving forward. Item D is that the proposed special land use from that tree addition, shot create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. Site plan simply says that no unanticipated demand will be placed on city services. We noted in here that micro business would be permitted to have up to a hundred and fifty plants. We have some concerns over like power consumption, for example. The applicant states in the narrative that harvests would be staggered to limit excessive system needs and. Limited water would, would be necessary, like twenty-five gallons a day, which, um, isn't, isn't too bad. They also show in here that they're proposing LEDs instead of higher consumption. Uh, HPS lights with four plants under each light. You know, there, there is some limitation in the, in, in the overall intensity here because it's a micro business. And so it's not like the full growth facility where they might have thousands of plants or the smaller number here. You know, but again, um, as you know, the, the other, um, micro business and. Uh, the one grow operation that we've, that we, we've talked about, um, there was a, there is. A process and there were some, some discussion with making sure that the low light and power is involved with the review of the. Uh, project to make sure that they have adequate capacity and they don't foresee any problems. Uh, with the, with the site like this as well. Item E is that the, is that the proposed special land use should not involve uses, activities, processes, materials and equipment. Will be, that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by excessive production of noise, traffic, smoke, fumes, et cetera. We've kind of talked about this already, but we wrote, wrote in here that orders are a primary concern. Uh, we note that the applicant has proposed HEPA and carbon filters. Each grow tent and storage area are supposed to have negative air pressure inline fan and carbon filter. And then we also talked about this a little bit farther along in, in the report. But there is, you know, some concern there obviously. Uh, the others, I'm, I'm not sure if things have, if traffic patterns have changed much recently with Loom opening up, but. But when we wrote this before they opened, you know, we had seen that. Uh, the first establishment meds cafe had a lot of traffic. So there could be a slight uptick in traffic on a property if, if this were to open. However, we don't think it would be something that would be. Uh, so monumental of an increase that it would, uh, have a, have a seriously deleterious effect on the city. And then the final standard is that the proposed special land use, uh, comply with applicable federal state and local requirements, which. As with everything is addressed as a condition of approval. So those are the general special land use standards. And Mr. Chairman, back to you.
I, I just have a real quick question on E, uh, be the third paragraph there discussing the hours of operation, I think. Marty, you've got these down for marijuana. What, what's the current, uh, timeframes for marijuana operations in the city?
Oh, it's, uh.
Nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday, eleven PM, eleven AM to six PM on Sunday.
Yeah.
Thank you. And we need to put that obviously in the, uh, conditions.
Well, Mike, those are in the city's operating ordinance, is that correct? Or the licensing ordinance?
That is correct. It's in the regulatory ordinance.
So that's something, Mr. Chairman, that we probably don't need to have in our conditions if you were to approve it because it's already addressed. That'll be addressed with the operating license.
I'd like to keep it in there because we put it in there with all the other marijuana operations. I believe we did.
Did we?
We, we at least talked about it. Marty?
Yeah, we, uh, I'm pretty, quite confident we put it in all the other ones. So this should be no different.
Yeah. I just want to be consistent with it. And if it's redundant, it's redundant. I don't, that's fine.
Well, it's, I'm less concerned about redundancy, but if we put in there nine to nine or whatever it is, then if, if the city changes its. It's operating license ordinance at some point to say nine to ten or eight to eight or some other. Some shift in hours. Then the applicants would have to come in and amend their special uses every time instead of just. Being able to comply kind of automatically with the new requirements. So I guess that would be my. Objection for putting that in there specifically is that it, it might change since it's covered not in zoning, but by a different set of rules.
Well, we've already been asked to change the hours and, uh, we decided to keep them the same. So. Uh, I'd like to see in there, uh, as far as the conditions.
Okay. And, and like, like Marty said, we've, we've put it in everybody else's. We've gone through what, four or five of these and. Every one of them has the exact same situation and we set the pattern. And I don't see any sense in not doing it at this point. If the city decides to change the ordinance. Then it's on them. They change the ordinance and they figure it out, not us. So I, I, I feel confident that we should do it and just keep it in there.
Chair Barker, we've already had a request at city council to change the ordinance for. Uh, one of the businesses, uh, and we declined it. So.
Right.
I think putting it in yours is a good idea. I just think it's an extra layer.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Mike, on Sunday, you said that was eleven to six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I know orders will be coming up in the next section as well, but say there is a problem with orders. The only way that would be caught would be if a neighbor, a neighboring business reports through zoning. Ordinance violations, is that the only way that that would be picked up? It's not like someone goes in every once in a while and, you know, does a sniff test or, you know. Something like that.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, so it wouldn't have to be a neighboring business owner. I mean, although I would suspect that they would be. Probably the first ones to be affected and likely the first ones to complain about it. Um, but anyone could complain, I suppose. But yeah, I mean typically, um, these kinds of violations. Tend to be complaint driven unless it's really obvious. Um, so the city would receive a comment or a complaint or. Somehow or maybe there's a site visit. It happens or something like that. It gets noticed and then it would get followed up from there.
I guess my question then is what, what is that follow-up process? To make sure that eventually there is compliance, you know. Is there a strike system and then something happens or is it a just, we're gonna keep hounding you and hopefully you'll comply at some point?
So with. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so what we would, what we would do with these is it, we would come into there, we would, we would probably send them a notice. Normal code enforcement, it would probably be treated like any other code enforcement issue. You get ten days to correct the matter. If you don't. Then you would be cited. If we, if we have to cite them, um, it's very simple. We can pull their permit. We'll just pull it. If, if, if we. If we have to keep going to the same place over and over again, we're shutting them down. So it, there's no, there's no messing around. The, the ordinance is very, you know, the ordinance is very restrictive. And if they can't follow the ordinance, then they can't operate. It's that simple. So we give them one chance and that's it.
One of the benefits of this.
Know kind of how strict or you know what the process was.
Yeah, there's, I mean. They gotta, they gotta comply and they, they, they gotta comply and they're, they have a lot of money involved in this. So the capitalization requirements itself. Are going to be what basically incentivize them to follow our rules. So they gotta follow them. Otherwise, we're just not gonna, we're just not gonna mess around with it. And we haven't had the issue yet, so.
I.
Thank you.
I, I, in regard to letter E in the same situation, I still have a hard time. The, the air handling for each one of those buildings is up on the roof and the air fresh air intake. Uh, I just, it, it's just really close quarters and all the other facilities are very independent and have a quite a large buffer and. I, I, I just am very leery about this particular one because of the close proximity of the other. Establishments. I, 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 do we have any? Thing that we've written up that says that they have to have a buffer zone?
So we don't have, there's not a requirement in zoning that. That a marijuana establishment can't go into a multi-tenant business. We do say that it can't go into a building that also has residential uses in it. But we didn't codify it specifically that it has to be its own standalone building. You know, that said, if, if amongst the planning commission, there's, there's a, a, a significant enough concern about orders. I guess there's a couple of things that, that you could do. Um, the first one might be to, you know, uh, direct the applicant to submit something. You know, in, in great detail, you know, prepared by. A qualified professional that really, really clearly demonstrates how this is going to be handled, how this, how everything is, is going to be set up. How it works, what they're going to do to address that specific concern. And then, you know, see what they come back with at a subsequent meeting. And if that, if that meets. You know, your, your comfort threshold as planning commissioners. I mean, ultimately. These kinds of, 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 of decisions are, are based on has the applicant, you know, done enough to. Demonstrate that they are or will comply with the zoning ordinance. And with most of these so far, um, they have in this one, you know, because it is the first one that's. That's not in its own standalone building. Um, it's one of the first, this is. It's the third one. This is the, that would do growing is the second of micro business. And so certainly, you know. There's, there are different characteristics and different merits to each application and US planning commissioners need to evaluate those independently. And if there's, if there's something that the applicant. Um, needs to do in, in, in your review to make sure that you're comfortable with the application, then I would ask for them to do it. And if, if they do, and if they, you know, kind of convince you or if they, if they address your concerns satisfactorily, then. Okay, you can move on. And if they don't, then I guess, you know, you can vote accordingly.
I would like to see a detailed.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I, I would like to see a detailed, uh, HVAC, air, fresh air intake, uh, relationship. With the other facilities. I don't know what the distance is from the exhaust of this one. To the next door Chinese restaurant or the tanning booth, but if there. I mean, what, what is the buffer zone of these HVAC? There, there, there's just a lot of data that. I think we need to take in account when looking at a facility right next to two other establishments.
Am I good to weigh in here?
Uh, Michael?
Yes, sir. So, um, as, as I mentioned before, the two layers of air handling, so the first being. Of the individual tents themselves having their own HEPA and carbon filter. And then coming through the second, you know, the main room being air handled. Uh, as well. And that, that's what would be exhausted above would be the stuff from the main room. Which is, you know, the first layer of defense would be the tents with the negative air pressure, um, and the HEPA and carbon filter within them. But we can definitely submit a detailed plan if that's needed.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Marty?
If he, if he's willing to submit a more detailed plan of their handling system and. How exactly, uh, he's gonna vent the air from the inside out, I would really like to see that. And I appreciate you, Michael, making that gesture to, to bring that forward. So I'd like to see it personally.
Okay.
Okay. Any other commissioner thoughts? Okay, then having said that, Andy, can we go ahead and take a vote on the special land use review standards? Having said that, that we want to have, we want to have that done before we do the final vote.
So what I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, is that it sounds like there's some, some questions as to whether or not. Standard E would be met. So I wouldn't encourage you to take a vote affirmatively on all of these. At this point, if you're not yet convinced that all five of those criteria have been satisfied. So, um, we can certainly continue through. Yeah, I mean, we can continue through the, the specific standards for adult use establishments if you want. Or alternatively, you can, you can table the application. Uh, or postpone a decision for a month and direct the applicant to submit, uh, you know, additional order control. Patient, but I would hold on.
Let's go ahead with the, let's go ahead with the adult use marijuana special land use standards.
Okay.
Let's go ahead with those.
Okay, so these standards are, are the, within the special land use chapter of the zoning ordinance, chapter seventeen, we have subsections. Uh, A all the way through FF, I think beyond that now. Uh, and each one of those subsections, uh, talks about a different. Uh, special land use. And so there are certain standards for, for each one of them. And you'll see the, the lettering in my report doesn't line up. Some of them are not really standards that we would repeat in here. It just talks about. Submental requirements or intent statements or things like that. So. Walking through my, my, my list here, item B is the separation distances. So if you recall when this was drafted. Uh, a couple of years ago, we have the thousand feet from schools and daycares and things like that, five hundred feet from your C two district. Uh, this does satisfy all of those standards and the applicant did submit a map. Uh, orders we've talked about, I think already in sufficient detail and our comments here basically kind of mirror that to say that the planning commission should. Discuss it and can ask for additional application or additional information from the applicant if it is so inclined. Item D talks about, uh, byproducts or waste of any kind being properly kept and disposed of. While, while there wasn't a. A dumpster showing on, on the site plan, um, the applicant indicated that, um, they would. That the garbage would be handled by the company that services the building and all soil and leftover matter would be organic and disposed of any local farm for reuse or composting. You know, again, because this is a shared establishment with other uses, it's a little bit different here, but. We do not have any significant concerns, um, over this at this time based on what the applicant put in their narrative. Item E, and this is what we talked about earlier, shall be operated out of a residence for any building used wholly or partially for residential purposes. So that is not an issue here. F talks about, uh, energy usage, heat usage, chemicals, herbicides, pesticides, et cetera. Um, all would be subject to inspection by the fire department. Uh, we stayed in here, the input from low light and power is recommended. The applicant stated that grow operations would use organic methods and not use any chemical pesticides. Item G prohibits a marijuana establishment from also selling alcohol and, and tobacco. That's not, not an issue. Drive-through issues and item H is not an issue here. Uh, item I requires it comply at all times and all circumstances with the Michigan. Uh, regulation and taxation of marijuana act. Uh, for the planning commission may require additional landscape buffers. We've discussed that already and determined that, uh, that's not necessary for the applicant to do. Item K, the owner and or licensee shall maintain clear and adequate records and documentation demonstrating that all products have been obtained from and are provided to. They're permitted and licensed operations. So this is something I think that we mentioned in our. In our earlier, uh, earlier remarks that, um. That, um, you know, some information on record keeping or documentation would be helpful. Um, the business plan indicates that business, their business goals are to export their product to dispensaries throughout Michigan. Um, but record keeping is something that we've talked about with the other establishments in terms of, you know, the software and how they. Track the sales and in, in this case, if they're. If they're growing, if they're looking to, to sell to other, to other dis- dispensaries and there's a, you know. There's a processing and, and the secure transporter aspect to this as well. Item L, necessary going electrical plumbing, et cetera, et cetera, permits must be obtained, which we addressed as a, any condition of approval, obviously. And then item M, if there's any conflict, then, uh, the, the state's regulation and taxation of marijuana act would. Control as would the rules for adult use marijuana establishment. So, um, those are the standards, again, I would, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hold off at this point on voting on these as well because they're. Um, at a minimum, the odor issue has, has been resolved to the commission's satisfaction, it didn't sound like. So I would not recommend voting on these at this point until you at least receive that, but if there are any other. Pieces of information that the applicant needs to submit, I would, uh, you know, suggest that you. Let's, let's make it clear now what you're looking for so that, uh, they can come back to the next meeting and be fully prepared with everything that they need. And, uh, you can hopefully make a decision.
Andy, I, Andy, I, I do have one under your recommendations, under the, um, conditions. And it would be condition number thirteen. Uh, it says, uh, uh, because this is a multi-tenant building, the city. And it, it's, it's written here, may require additional odor control measures. And, and I, I cross that off to say will, the city will require additional odor control measures. If orders are detectable at adjacent businesses. I don't know if we can do that or not, but if, if we could change that from May to will or shall or something along that line, is that possible?
Um, yeah, I mean, if, if, so it, it, obviously if we're, if, if the commission isn't tying, is inclined to, to make a. You know, decision on this, then we would incorporate that, that's a condition of approval. Um, so we would do that if you're going to, if you're going to approve them, then yes. Um, if you're not, then I wouldn't even get in, get into the conditions at this point because it's a little bit premature to do so. So I guess let's kind of figure out what.
But will, will you keep that in your, will you keep that in your notes so I don't forget?
Yes.
Yep. Will you keep that in your notes so I don't forget it? Okay, um, commissioners, are there any other thoughts on this?
No, so we're gonna have Michael put us together a package of. Their handling, see if I got my notes right, uh, the air handling, uh, the air scrubbers. Uh, I still think that some, uh, negative pressure inside the buildings probably, uh, warranted. And how close, uh, really are the, the fresh air intakes on those rooftops? From one another and where they exhaust out, um, I think that, that's kind of what we're all looking for, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All I got.
Have, having, having said that, uh, go ahead, Marty.
No, that's all I got.
Having said that, then I would like to, uh, make the motion that we table the River City Cannabis. Uh, until further, uh, notice, um, uh, and hopefully at the January meeting, we can do that.
Yeah.
Um, Michael, from an applicant standpoint, is, does that timeframe look doable?
Yeah, yeah, completely, um, I also had, uh, you know, you guys mentioned the security stuff, I was gonna make a comment on that if, if I got a moment as well.
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I know that that was not a direct concern, but it was mentioned a couple of times, um. Uh, I work full-time at EPS Security at the moment, uh, doing security system installation and, uh, maintenance. And, um, we're gonna be, we're gonna, the, the plan that I submitted has the, uh, the detailed stuff for the control panel that we're intending to use. As well as a detailed, like, uh, points to the zones, to the front door, the glass break detectors, the motion detectors. Everything that's in line with, you know, it's gonna be more security than a, a lot of the banks have that I service, so.
Okay, all of that information, then, if, if, Michael, if you'll, um, work with Andy and Andy will work with you, I'm sure. Uh, and then let's, let's try to get together, uh, again at our, uh, uh, January meeting, which is the second Monday of the, uh, month of January.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else in agreement with that at this point?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Sue, we don't need a vote on that, do we?
Yes.
Sue? We need a vote on that?
You do. Yep.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Oh, no, and any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
And was that Ellis who seconded it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, council member, I mean, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioners Robyn.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, and Sue, I'm, I'm sure that Dave is very glad that that was probably just a slip of the tongue. On that commissioner. Right, Dave?
What?
He said councilman Dave. Just a joke, bad one.
No.
Um, okay, so with that, then, uh, we'll schedule that, uh, for the January meeting, please. Amanda, anything? Okay, new business, site plan review for Culligan Water. Uh, twenty-five thirty-one West Main, thank you, Michael.
Yep, thank you, have a good night.
Andy, you wanna, uh, go ahead or, no, let's, let's do, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, is Pam here, Pam Denker? Pam, would you please, or one of your representatives, would you give us just in your own words, a brief description of what you want to do?
Uh, sure, yeah, hi, everyone, um. So my husband and I own, um, Denker Culligan Water and also Home Experts Heating Cooling and Plumbing. And we currently have, um, we operate both businesses in Ionia and, um, Lowell is our territory as well. And we've been hoping to, um, to put a second location in Lowell. And so we demolished the existing building, um. It just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work to remodel it, it was just too old with too many, too many problems, so our plan is to. Um, put a new beautiful building up and, um, it would essentially have, uh, two suites. One, we would operate for Denker Culligan Water and Home Experts Heating Cooling and Plumbing. And the other we would lease out, and at this point, we've been in conversations and intend to lease it to Edward Jones. And did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I'll.
I'm sure we'll have more questions as we go along here, but, uh, appreciate it, thank you for being on board here tonight.
Yeah.
Um, Andy, would you, um, go ahead and run us through the background here and the site planner view?
Yep.
Andy, can I just say real quick, I wanted to say that I have, um, um, with us also Ken Dixon, our architect, architect. And, um, Paul Henderson, our engineer, so I'll defer mostly to them for your questions from here on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so this is a property, uh, on Main Street there, within the industrial district. Which, um, the, you don't think of it that way most of the time, but the far west side of town. Um, there is some industrial zoning there, uh, kind of down by where Michigan Wire is. Uh, uh, and so the property is a little less than an acre. Um, and so they're proposing a new building of about six thousand square feet, a bit less. Um, and also re- retaining when building on the site of about twelve hundred square feet. Uh, the proposed use is kind of a combination of warehousing, retail and office space. So we consider that the building is kind of primarily used for warehouse and office type uses, which is what's permitted in the industrial district. And that the retail would be kind of accessory to that, uh, so. The way we see it, this would be a, a, a use permitted by right, the industrial district. They have submitted a complete site plan package for the planning commission's review. Uh, we do have a couple of comments in our site plan review memo here that talks about, uh, site lighting, so they have three new wall pack lights on the building. Um, the plan narrative or the notes state that the fixtures would be downward facing and fully, fully cut off, which is. Um, but the city requires for all of their buildings and all their, uh, pole lights as well. As far as parking is concerned, um, based on our math, we have the applicant short by one parking space, but that's not a huge concern. Is there is quite a bit of, uh, variability in, in the master plan and that it enables the planning commission to. Kind of modulate to some degree, um, up or down what your minimum, uh, parking requirement would be for the site. Um, and so our parking calculation was based on, um. We've kind of cut it up into retail and office and, and warehousing and calculated them each separately. So we had, uh, some meeting, the parking requirements for retail and office, too short for the warehousing use. Um, and because there's a minimum of four, um. But they added in the ADA space, which makes them short by one, again, this is not really a, a huge concern to me, I don't really want to get hung up on one parking spot. Personally, I think that, um, if it, it's, it's, it's within reason if it's about what the city requires. And if it's going to work for the applicant's purposes, then I don't really think that it's something that we need to spend a lot of time debating personally. Um, they do, uh, let's see, for landscaping, uh, the site plan meets the front yard landscaping requirements. Um, site, site plan shows a five-foot wide planting strip, um, and also there's a, one of their. Re- 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 retention basins is located in front of landscaping, so it is a fairly wide amount of green space along Main Street there. Um, so you can include that in the, in the ten-foot requirement for the width of your front yard landscaping. So we're, overall, we're satisfied with the landscaping shown on the site plan. Um, they're proposing to utilize the existing pole sign, um, which is fine, it does limit. Um, what they can do to some degree if they're gonna use that sign, um, if they're just gonna change out. The, the face of the sign basically and leave the cabinet and everything in place, that's fine. Um, if they're to take the whole thing down, then, um, that would have some implications as far as what gets put back there and how big it is. Because the city's sign ordinance is a little more restrictive than it used to be, um, but that's something that, that we deal with as staff. After the fact, signs are some, are, are a permit that comes in after site plan review. And so we will take a look at the sign to make sure that it is also, uh, acceptable moving forward. Uh, the only real concern that we have in here with regard to the accessory building is that it's too close to their proposed building. Uh, we require that all of the accessory buildings have to be ten feet away from the main building. And this one, it looks like it's a little, uh, too close, and I mean, a little too close, it's like. Um. There's about. I think five, but there's about three feet between the existing building and the proposed building, so they'll need to. Uh, move things around to come up with an additional seven feet there so that, that, that setback is met. Or I suppose they could join the buildings together somehow if they felt like doing that. Um, but at any rate, if you're going to have a detached accessory building. Um, and this goes for residences or for commercial buildings, the ordinance doesn't specify between the two. Um, it requires a ten-foot minimum separation between access, between accessory, accessory and primary buildings. So that is one, the site plan adjustment that would need to happen. Um. Are there questions? I'm just stop for a second before we get into the site plan review. Uh, standards.
Andy, I.
There are questions?
Uh, Andy, I got a, I got a question here, and I think either probably Ken might be able to answer this as the architect. Um, or Pam be the one, um, in regard to this distance between the existing building and the proposed new building. Is there a, a ready fix? I, I'm assuming you, you were aware of this situation, so. Um, I'm not looking for a permanent answer right now, but i- is there something that you can give us?
Yeah, I gotta, uh, hopefully, well, an easy fix is that we are intending to, uh, connect the two by a roofway to make it one, uh, building, more or less. Trying to meet the definition of a, of one building, not two separate detached buildings.
Andy, does that work? Andy, does that work?
Yes.
Uh.
They attach two buildings?
It should be fine, um, as long as the. Yeah, I don't see an issue with that, the only potential issue is that. Once you're, once, when, once you join them too, then what was the accessory becomes the main building, and so we'd just have to check that they meet. They meet main building setbacks, and it looks like they still would, so, uh, my preliminary answer there is that that should be fine.
Okay, we'll treat both of those as preliminary at this point, but, uh, um, it seems to be the, uh, the best fix at this point. Thanks, Ken.
You bet.
Um, any other questions, commissioners? Or applicants, I guess, at this point? Andy, then let's continue on to site plan review standards.
All right, so this is, because this is permitted by right, um, and this is probably good news for the planning commission. Um, and the applicants who have been on the, on the call so far is that we don't have to walk through a bunch of additional standards after this, we just have the site plan review standard, so. Uh, we'll walk through these and then, Mr. Chairman, you just want to vote on all of them as a group at the end? Like we did before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So the first standard is that these is proposed when they adversely affect the public health, safety or welfare. Uses and structures located on the site shall be planned to take into account topography size of the property, uses on adjoining property and so forth. So all of the adjacent properties are either in the industrial district or on the opposite side of Main Street, they're in the C three district. Um, uses proposed are primarily warehousing, um, retail, office uses, et cetera. Um, we, we wrote in our report that we weren't sure about the building materials, however. Uh, this afternoon, we did get the architectural plans from the applicant, which I've not had a chance to review in great detail. As far as the materials go, um, and I don't know if, uh, Ken, you want to speak to this real quick? Just because I didn't have a chance to look at it. Prior to the meeting in much detail as far as the building materials are concerned.
Uh, yes, so, uh, the, the plans were submitted, uh, to, earlier today in regards to, they have elevations, show each, each of the four facades of the building. And we have on those drawings, um, a, a fiber cement siding, uh, indicated. Uh, however, over the course of originally submitting these documents, um, with the original, with the original, uh, site plan. We've been getting some pricing back, uh, on structure and, uh. We are, as opposed to the fiber cement, which goes for a wood frame building, we are now looking at a steel siding. Similar to what the pole, the, the existing structure is, so we would be matching the existing structure and the materiality. I think that was, uh, a potential issue was that, uh, they needed to be compatible, so we would be much more compatible. Um, the steel, the steel pricing on, on buildings right now are, is more, uh, cost effective. The wood with all the fires, uh, across the country and the border shut and whatnot, uh, wood is a very expensive commodity at this time. So we're, we're looking at doing it out of steel and then the steel siding is compatible with that.
Um. Item B. Save convenient, uncongested and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and ingress points within the site. Drive streets, other circulation routes, uh, shop promote safe and efficient traffic operations. Uh, the site plan, um, looks acceptable as far as this is concerned, the minimum. The minimum dimensions for the parking lot meets, uh, what's required by the zoning ordinance in section nineteen point oh six. Um, obviously, as far as accessibility and, and, and maneuverability goes. Uh, we would also defer to the fire department for their comments and as far as process goes, if this is approved. Um, it would get circulated around to the fire department and other city departments as well to make sure that they can. Uh, look at it and are comfortable with, with the site, but I don't anticipate any issues as far as that is concerned. Um, there's also a, uh. Proposed concrete sidewalk in front of the building, sidewalk is already along the front of the property, um, on Main Street, which is great. Um, in the past, I know the planning commission has, has required a, a pedestrian connection from the street to the building itself. I don't know that that's required in this case, I guess I'll, I defer to the planning commission's judge. I guess I'll I defer to the planning commission's jud- judgment here, but it doesn't seem like something that would be as. You know, have as much in the way of pedestrian traffic as some of the other. Buildings where you've required a sidewalk or something that connects to the front of the building itself from the street.
Andy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Andy? Um can I ask Paul Henderson? I assume you're with Edward Jones.
No, sir, I'm with Rosina Associates. I'm the civil engineer that prepared the site plan.
Ah, okay, sorry. I was just thinking Edward Jones, Pam uh is is or Pamela is the uh. Uh the possible tenant that you would have. I guess that would be the only concern I would have uh as far as having a sidewalk for pedestrians if they would really want it, I guess.
Uh we haven't had that conversation yet. Um we've, we're still in conversations with them. And I I just, um I hesitate to, uh until we have something, a full agreement and everything's ready. Of course, we won't be sure about that, but I think that they are unlikely to have uh much pedestrian traffic. But I could be wrong about that too.
Okay, well, if you'll include it, I guess, in your discussion, it can always be, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, Andy. Thank you, Pam. Go ahead, Andy.
Item D, the removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas reasonably necessary to develop the site. Um in this case, I don't think there are any natural features that we're terribly concerned about. Most of the site is open. And um this is, I think, going to be a the generally positive redevelopment of that property in the city. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, codes and requirements of the city are met. Which would be addressed as a condition of approval. If you're inclined to approve it tonight. Then F, the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the master plan shall be maintained. Um the master plan uh again shows us in a in a mixed use designation intended to permit. Presidential office and commercial uses, but not necessarily in downtown style buildings. Um intended to be uh pedestrian oriented. Um and then as far as zoning is concerned. The intent there in according to the ordinance is to provide employment opportunities for city residents and promote uses that would not negatively affect. Residential or other uses in the city. So the property is not really adjacent to any residential uses. And overall, you know, we don't have any reason to think that it wouldn't contribute positively to the overall. Uh commercial and industrial development of the city moving forward. So um our recommendation here, we did have a recommendation of approval in our staff report. Uh we had a list of eleven conditions um on 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 that approval. And I can walk through those, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to briefly.
Let's hold on that until we do the site plan review standards.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Uh take a vote on that. I'll make the uh motion, Bruce. Marty?
Before we do this, Andy, hooking the buildings together makes a lot of sense, but. That also increases their parking spots, doesn't it?
Uh it could.
Because eventually they could sell it and make three tenants, three, see. I just want to make sure that that we get the parking issue right.
Well, it adds to their square footage, so it it potentially adds to parking. However, um in our zoning ordinance under parking, we have a lot of flexibility built in here. So we um specifically enable the planning commission, and I'm trying to find the standard right now. We uh we allow the planning commission to authorize an increase or decrease in off-street parking requirements. When it's demonstrated that parking demand is expected to be uh either more or less than than the requirements of the ordinance. So this is written in in here as an opportunity for, you know, the the applicant to kind of demonstrate what they need. Planning commission can accept that or not. So it's not like we often see in a lot of communities in the city where it's, you know, your building is ten thousand square feet. That means you need twenty spaces or 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 something like that. We do have that language in here. But we also have uh the section that kind of allows the planning commission to modify uh that requirement as as necessary. So um it, you know, at at this point, they have. Uh I forget how many specifically, six, five, you got about sixteen, seventeen spaces on the site.
You know?
Andy, if I could?
Require a couple extra spaces, but I I would kind of defer to the applicant's demand and what their needs are.
Yes, if if I could for just a moment, please. Talk to the parking, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The the parking is generally uh based on the use of any structure. So, you know, we have particular uses in this footprint. The you warehouse use in the back was included in the parking calculation. So, you know, the one space, if that's a sticking point, we have room to add a space. But I just want to point out that the parking that we're proposing now is based on the current use, proposed use. So if someone came in and wanted to reconfigure this, they'd have to come back to you, you know, with the new use and prove that they had the required parking. So whether this, whether these buildings are combined uh as one single building or as two separate buildings. The parking calculations won't change. They're based on the use of the structures as they are proposed now.
You would be adding a little bit of square footage, Marty, but probably not enough to make a significant difference.
Yeah, because we've had uh parking. Parking issues before about making sure adequate enough space. So I just want to make sure I like that, hooking the buildings together, good idea. Uh just want to make sure that we got a parking there.
Pam, Pam has an existing business, you know, it's not like this is a new entity. So she's, you know, confident this will be enough parking for their use.
Any other, any other question, any other questions from commissioners? Andy, any other thoughts? I will make a uh.
The only other.
Go ahead, Andy.
The only other other comment I would make, uh Mr. Chairman, for, yeah, I have this in my. In uh potential conditions is that with there being a change of use that M dot requires permits like we talked about before. Um and M dot permit would be required and I and they like to require. Uh, you know, cross S, cross access easements between adjacent properties. So either to the east or to the west, that's something that uh particularly to the west, in this case, that's something that could be entertained. As a possible condition of approval would be to have a potential easement for a future connection to the property to the west. Wouldn't necessarily have to be constructed at this point, but looking down the line, that's something that they've been encouraging. Uh the city to do is to make those connections be- between properties. So that vehicles don't have to continually turn out onto Main Street and then, you know, turn back in one or two parcels down.
It is the property to the east, um is the property to the east already um have a access point there?
Um everyone there, I think, has an access point to Main Street. So there's a bank to the west, uh to the east is, uh what is that to the east?
Michigan wire facility.
Oh, that's right. So you got Michigan wire to one side, um you got the bank to the other side. Again, I don't think it's something that needs to be constructed in immediately, but I'm just. You know, thinking that, yeah, I've had this conversation with them before and they encourage those easements. So that is something that uh could be a condition of approval if you're inclined. I don't know what their thoughts are going to be on this additional driveway they have coming in off of Main Street. They may not approve that for some reason, I don't know, so I'm just kind of thinking about some of the other.
If I could weigh in, Andy, um I would like to point out that both the property to the west and to the east. Have two entrances already. They each have one on Alden Nash and they each have one on Main Street. So um, you know, uh people on those two sites, if they need a different means of ingress or regress. Could uh access off Alden Nash way it is now.
Correct.
It is there for the.
Having said that, then. Right. Um, okay, with that, then I will make the uh motion that we accept the uh site plan review standards. Um A through F as written, um and do I have a second? And is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, Sue, will you please do a uh voice or voice count, please, roll call?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Godula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schroben.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Uh having seen all of those, then I will make the uh motion that we accept the uh site plan review. Uh for Culligan Water as is with uh the uh eleven conditions. And Andy, you're saying that we should add a twelfth condition?
It is, I'm, I'm saying it's, I'm saying the planning commission should think about it. Um a couple of other things I'd like to note in the list of conditions. We can strike uh condition number eight, which would, which requires the ten feet of separation between the two buildings. Um so we can actually just say that uh the new building uh shall be joined or attached. To the existing building.
Okay.
And condition number nine about building elevations, uh that can be deleted because they have submitted those. And then our former number ten, what's now our our number nine? The applicant shall receive approval from M dot for the new curb cut and submit a copy of approval to the city. Again, I think for planning commission discussion, if you want them to, um you know, put in. A crocs, cross access easement to either of the parcels to the east or west, that would be where that would also go if you're inclined to do that. Uh if not, then no other changes needed. I'm just putting it out there for planning commission discussion.
Well, I think we should, I think we should put it in there because we uh we had looms do it. Uh and they hooked into the auto store. The uh parcel across the street there couldn't because of the way uh drainage and all that, right, Andy, right there by uh. The gas company.
Yep.
Right, we had an itch there, so we couldn't and then.
They did one to the east but not to the west. So it it's it's not always in in both directions. Sometimes it doesn't make sense, sometimes it does.
If if I could offer one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do need to approach M dot for a permit. We already have made a preliminary submittal to Kerwin Keane at M dot. They are um keenly interested in um maintaining uh shared access. If it, if it's suitable to you, I'd rather leave that up to M dot's engineer and their safety and traffic people. To decide, determine whether it's necessary for this given site. It'll be part of their review process of our entrance.
They often ask me if if the planning commission is required an easement and will encourage the planning commission to to do so at times. So um if the planning commission wants to do it, I would suggest you put it in your conditions, otherwise they might not. They might say, well, Sig didn't didn't want to do it, then they didn't do it. So I think if that's something the city feels is important, I would say so.
I I would, I would, I would agree with uh Marty. And uh I'll I'll take the advice of our uh Andy Moore from the uh Williams and Works. So let's, let's add that in. Is that an extra one, Andy?
I think we could add it to number nine, since we're talking, that's kind of in the same topic, so.
Could we limit that to the west property?
I think that's some logical point to me. But. It's up to the commission.
West is, west is fine.
Marty?
No, I'm good with the west.
Mark?
Agreed, agreed.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So having said that, then. I will go back and resubmit this and say my. Uh I will move that we accept the Culligan Water Site Plan Review as written. As well as uh adding the um eleven conditions, or no, excuse me, ten additions.
There are ten conditions now, yeah.
Conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
And discussion. Seeing or hearing none, Sue, would you do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Godula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schroben.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, and congratulations and uh welcome to the city, Pamela. Nice, nice to have you guys aboard and uh nice plan and and uh hop to it. Let's get her built.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh staff report, uh Sue, anything? Nice to have you back, by the way.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I will just for you, oh, go ahead.
Mike, Michael?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Andy?
Um just as for your information, uh. Uh there'll be some improvements going on at the uh Lowell Light and Power Site on Chatham. They submitted a site plan just for some, it's primarily parking lot improvements. That was something that I had considered sending to to the planning commission, but after review, I didn't think it was necessary. And the ordinance allows for a staff review of of those items, so it'll be a new sign, new surfacing, new parking circulation area and all that. So that's just uh for your information.
Yeah, questions is, is, does anybody want anything on that in a packet or anything along that line, just to outline?
No, what they're doing is, is they got a, they got a, they're doing a million dollar renovation to that building, that property. And they're moving everything inside in that parking lot from when the old bile digester was there. Those trucks constantly turning, going back there, uh really tore that parking lot up. Uh it's going to be more secured uh and just a whole lot better flow over there. And that was the whole reasoning for the the new parking lot or the tear up relay and reconfigure of it.
Okay. Commissioner remarks, let's start with uh Mike this time.
Uh nothing, I'm good. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Ellis?
I am okay. I uh had some issues with this Zoom thing. My computer kind of went out of print, so I apologize about being tardy.
You were fine. We knew you were there, you just couldn't, we just couldn't see you. Colin?
Uh no, no comments.
Amanda?
I've got nothing to add.
David?
I am totally good.
Mike or Marty?
It was nice to do a. Zoning for a brand new building going up that wasn't what our previous one was that we discussed. So, uh, that was kind of quite enjoyable. It's nice getting back to putting real buildings up again. Um, another net, everybody have a good Christmas and we'll, uh, we'll all get through all this together.
I, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I wanna wish everybody, obviously, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd like to take us just for a minute, uh, in memory of all that have passed away, the three hundred thousand that have passed away. Uh, since this nonsense started. Uh, so if we would, just take a second, uh, let's, let's give it five seconds of silence. And just a prayer that we can all have a good, good twenty, twenty-one. With that, Happy New Year all. And do I have a move for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Support.
And this will be a voice vote. All in favor? Say aye. Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Have a good night.